...that all meeting bills including self-insurance funds and budget transfers ordered by the Board of Trustees on check one dated October 2nd, 2018 can be approved as previously did.
I think we've all got another stack that you have to sign.
Now that actually was signed, what happened was, one of the Board of Trustees had removed that top sheet. It was there because this came down on Friday at 12 noon and one of the Board of Trustees had misplaced this act as a document. So I had re-typed it out so it can be signed this evening. That's why I brought it out to be signed.
Thank you. I move.
I have a question. What's the running balance of the contingency? Because for any budget transfers, is the transfer from the contingency over? You know, what's left in the contingency?
I noticed that on one of the forms you did not sign. That's the question. And you do not have the answer this time?
Can we table this?
No, you table this.
You have a problem?
You can't table this.
Could you be able to get that information, please, and share it with all of us personally for Trustee Daniels? Let's move to vote. We need to vote on bills. We've got a bigger problem.
Yes, we do. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Repro?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? May I, Ryan?
Yes. All right, let's move to the open mic. Iris Anderson. Who's keeping the timer? I'm sorry to absolutely.
I have it here.
All right, it's five minutes.
Okay. Good evening, all residents. I wrote that I was going to talk about the litter on Hilton Avenue and parking illegally, but because I see police t here, I'd like to know, when do cops come over on Hilton between Mokford and Atlantic? At what time at night do they make a round on that side? Because I just heard tonight about all these no parking signs that are going up, all over the village of Hempstead, no parking, six to six, eight to six. My sign's been there since 1992. When do you please come over there and ticket the cars that are illegally parked?
They're on duty 24 hours, so they're supposed to ride around in the area and check.
This is not my first time speaking of this. I've taken pictures of the debris that is there because A, street cleaners can't clean the sidewalk, cars are parked, and cars that park there dump their garbage at the curb. Two years ago, I got cited because I had cracks in my sidewalk. Cost me $2,800 to repair, but I didn't. Recently, I got cited because I had a dead tree by my house on my property. That too cost me over $1,000 to remove. I asked again, when do I get police coverage over Hilton Avenue?
That's right. See, right about that.
All right, that's a good question. We get to ask James.
Police are on duty right now and they patrol all areas. If you say, if you ask it if they're supposed to go by that particular block at a specific time, there is no specific time.
There is no parking from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. No one is ticketed, so when do they come home? I've got pictures. I take pictures at 6:00 AM when I leave the morning, and if I come back to my house after 11:00, I take pictures. I've got plenty of pictures proving that cars park there, act well, because they're laughing at the Hempstead Police Department because they know they won't be ticketed. I'll be back because I keep bringing this up.
Appreciate your patience and be careful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Beverly Paul.
Good evening. Our old man Ryan, the name is Trustee, the still is Trustee. I just hope not to use the word devastation, destruction of Hempstead. She just brought up the parking situation, so I don't need to really go into that. They're not ticketed. They are absolutely not ticketed. We have the worst parking on my block on Leveridge. Someone even asked me what's going on because there's so much parking. I'll tell you what's going on. The banks and landlords, it's a business. They don't care. It's all about the money. They get the houses, they rent them out, they're overcrowding. Every adult in there has a vehicle and they park them and they don't care. People are crammed in there. It's dangerous for the fire department should anything happen. Where's the building department? Where's the police department on the streets? There's no accountability. There's no transparency. The surveys went out. I'm surprised that Phoenix is getting the signs. We are fighting for signs like crazy. No parking. It's on the, for what I understand, it's been on the books. She said 1992. It's been on the books. Exactly. And I bought no parking signs, I don't care from 9:00 to 4:00 AM, what it is, overnight. This is crazy. People have reported to putting orange cones in front of that house, even on Lincoln Boulevard. I mean, that Lincoln Boulevard, you can't get past each other going north or south. It's so dangerous. I am tired. I haven't been here that long in Hempstead, but I've seen Hempstead go down, down, down. All the things that I just want to talk about, it sounds great on paper. It's not like that where I live. I'm talking about Ingram Estates. It's got to change. Who's going to correct this? Will you? Will you, ma'am?
Okay. One of the things I would encourage is that right at the rest of traffic and safety, they meet the last Monday of each month in this room.
I know. I've been there.
Mary Rose.
I've been there.
Okay, we did, you had asked us about the street sweeping signs. That happened quickly.
We do have that one only on Leveridge and Spencer.
There are no signs indicating no parking?
Only on Leveridge and Spencer and a couple of other.
But not throughout the area?
I'm sorry?
Not throughout the area. If you can give me the specific streets, I will vote to Lieutenant K.
All of Ingram Estates. Yeah, just about. There's only about three or four of them.
Do you mention that to Lieutenant K?
And they do ticket them. They do ticket them. I've got to tell you that.
Yes.
Your parking is on every ticket, which is fine. What does it get driveway at school? I did not move out here from Queens to be in the same situation.
Right.
I mean, this is next door. When I moved out here, I thought, you got the papers I wrote, I thought it was like wonderful. Nobody was all over the streets and everything was clean. And yeah, and now, and now look. It's just, it's gone downhill because of these houses. Now, you were talking about the houses that are going to be renovated? Yeah, they're not going to be sold. They're going to be held and they're going to be crowded full of families. And I got to tell you, I got someone that pushed out a basement window to put a little air conditioner this size in. Are you living in the basement? Of course you are. Some people go on the front door. Some people go down the driveway. Some people go down the back door. People are crammed in there. There's an air conditioner here. There's an air conditioner on the other side. This ain't part of the house. You see so many satellite dishes. That's how you know what's going on.
You're right. Those are definitely something else, yeah.
Okay, so what are we doing about it?
Here we go. Our deputy George is here tonight. He's hearing this. I'll give a copy if you will place. I think Matt Herman is the code enforcer. Please share that thing with him. We have to do a better job, obviously, in the United States. This is not acceptable. We apologize, but we will inform our deputy director and also I'll go with director tomorrow. We'll see if we can get this thing voted.
Also, do you have a lady just home? I know what she's talking about because I go up and down to watch her to get to work. They're calling there right now and they have no parking signs. Right now, they're there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now this one is signed by the Winners Chapel representative here.
I'm bringing you here to the rest of the trustees as the former mayor, Mayor Palmer. Thank you for this opportunity to present on behalf of Winners Chapel International. My name is Ondo Chima. I'm one of the staff there. I'm also accompanied here by two other staff, Sonny Wadiwadi and Churchill Doh. The purpose of our coming is regarding getting parking spaces around the building. Just to register this fact, Winners Chapel International has been located in this area since 2010 when it purchased a multi-million dollar property at 310 Fulton Avenue. We currently are 17,000 plus square feet in size. And I say currently because we're doing major renovations. We currently have a market value of 2.5 million. It's a global church with locations across New York, including this Hempstead location. The problem we're experiencing is there's no parking around the building. There are two streets around 310 Fulton Avenue, mainly Fulton Avenue. The Fulton Avenue has no parking, obviously. Then you also have Helen Keller Way, which is facing the Helen Keller Building. The Helen Keller Building has parking spaces. I'm told this because the government built it, but this site on our own building doesn't have parking spaces. It has no parking signs or no loading signs or no standing signs. Then the final street, the third street, is Cooper Street. And on that side, they also have no loading and no parking signs. Well, that's the only place that we can park it. Constitutes only like four or five parking spots. I've got pictures of all of these. And this building was currently occupied by the MDC. And who knows? Maybe that's the reason why they have the no parking or no standing or loading signs. But there's currently no loading in the area because the adjacent building is the Nassau County building that I understand occupies the CEO of, I don't know, and then the traffic court is close by. But the point is that no one else really parks there other than the church. But the problem is recently we've started experiencing very aggressive ticketing by the police. Previously, we seemed to have a tacit agreement with them that they won't ticket in that area, saying that it's the only spots that the church has to park. The other spots give the parking lots that you have to pay meter parking for. Now, the tacit agreements have held up fairly well over the past year because again, I say we've been there since 2010. But it seems like there may have been new ticketing agents or police officers and they don't seem to understand the prior arrangement we've had with the, with, we've actually come to the village of Hempstead and met various staff at different times. And I don't have documentation for that, but that's the issue. But the issue we now have is we would like this matter finally resolved and put in light because again, we have a congregation size on Sundays over 1,000. We bring a lot of taxes into the area. A lot of our congregation members are Hempstead residents. They pay taxes. We pay taxes. We also, since we came into the community, there was a lot of crime in this surrounding area and it disappeared. We also, just in terms of our benefits, we are very much involved in a new construction that is going to pull a lot of revenue in terms of hiring of contractors and electricians. So if we really see the properties, it's actually fine. I've got pictures of it. And so what we would very much appreciate as a solution is for the no parking and no loading signs that were probably there because, as I mentioned before, because of the MDC to be removed so we can park there. I must say, the ticketing was even enforced in spite of the fact we're a church, in spite of the fact that we have pastoral stickers in the cars because there's no other place to park. And we're ticketed in spite of that. We got like over 20 tickets on the car, just in the car.
When is the expiration date on that? I didn't even know where you got one for that day.
Sorry?
The expiration date on that. I don't know why you have one.
Well, this one in particular, which is for me, the other person has a different one, which they have a different expiration date, is December 1st, 2018. And so we're just told we're parking illegally. But then what doesn't make sense is that every other, yes, sorry. What doesn't make sense is every other building around that area has one form of assigned parking or not. Now, what we would therefore like as a solution is that on the Cooper Street side, which is immediately adjacent to our building, it has maybe like four or five parking spaces. No other person really uses it because we get there first in the morning and we park our cars there and our church buses, is that they take the no parking signs off. We be given recognized rights to park there in view of the size of our congregation and the building as well. And we also have the many tickets that have been placed against those trucks. In addition, we would like the no loading signs even on Helen Keller Way, if it can be taken off, that would be an added bonus. But that's not necessary. What we would like at the minimum is parking on Cooper Street.
I'm just talking with Lieutenant K. Let me see if I have my clear on this. What you're asking about is free parking. You agree there's parking, but there's paid parking. Is that a concern?
No, there's no paid, yes, yes.
There's paid parking in the area?
There's paid parking. There's a public parking lot. But we're talking about the street like.
No, I understand that. And if there's free parking, it would be whoever gets there first. And you're alluding to the fact that your early arrival, you expect it would be you and your congregants.
Exactly. Well, we, the staff members get there and we're able to park our cars. We get there before everyone, but it's still ticketed in spite of the fact that there's no other use for that area. There's no big truck coming to offload. It's no longer owned by the MDC.
Is there a sign that says no parking?
The sign says no parking and another sign says no load, I'm sorry, sorry, loading only.
No loading, loading only. All right, I'm just talking with Lieutenant K, but they're enforcing the signs as they exist. I'm not real clear on the parking suggestion. You say you'd like to have no parking signs removed.
It's apparent that that may have been there because of the DMV that was there before. But that's redundant.
I think it was back many years.
Exactly.
I don't have Lieutenant K to look at it. I'm looking at, I'm thinking of the street in my head and I was coming over this parking on both sides and it's a two-way street.
I've got the pictures for, may I?
Yes. Yeah, we're going to have to refocus the traffic and safety with Lieutenant K. Okay. I think you have some suggestions and Lieutenant K, you take a look at this and I'll go. Thank you.
It's American, yeah. We brought this matter, my name is Sonny Wadiwadi and we're the Church of Hempstead. We brought this matter previous year, I believe in 2010, and they thought that they were looking to it. Recently, we also brought this matter. They said that we should come to the Board. So yeah, they had the.
Keep in mind that if you want to make a personal appeal, it's the last Monday of each month, 6:30, right here in this room. So you can explain it, the business. But in the meantime, we will notify them to expect us.
As I said, those signs were there about the building. The officers have removed the sign that it does not pay tax.
Who is that in terms of?
I think, I believe, we like to, to believe, I'm sure, I believe it was across the streets. They said that they were situated. Those signs are removed because, well, the sign was there on the part of the building and we were told that it wasn't.
We have to deal with that on a Monday night. We have to move on. We have to move on.
Okay, thank you. Please, Ryan?
Good evening, Antrustees. Ms. Barra, I love you too. Ms. Barra brought up the fact that we are overcrowded. Last month, I said, and I'm very disappointed, you are the mayor. You can tell the fire department, change their night for inspection. They have to listen to you. Maybe, I want to say this. Now, you said they do inspections while they can't come to this meeting. All heads of apartments are told to come to the first meeting of this month. The head of the fire department, he should be here to listen and give the report to the community. We've all come. He should come. Whether or not his meeting, he made it for the first Monday of the month? He's not in charge. He's only in charge of the fire department. He's not in charge of the village. Now, I'm going to say this. Let me say this. He is, he has to answer to you. You don't answer to him. And whether he wants to do an inspection on the first Tuesday of the month, they do it earlier so he can come here and report to the community because we pay for him to have his fire trucks. He can't say, well, I'm going to do my inspection once the first Tuesday of the month. It's several nights you come to this meeting because we have things that we want to report up the fire department. Because bottom line is, he answers to you and he answers to the village. And I'm tired of excuses. My mother said excuses is skin of a reason stuffed with a lie. He don't want to be here. He's going to report to the village because he don't think he has to. It's too much. And I'm tired of excuses. Enough is enough. And I want to say this. I had an officer tell me, I'm disabled. I have a handicap sticker. You know what he told me? Go find apartment space and bring up things up. I have packages. Now, there used to be a sign at 100 Terrace that told us we can unload, but what I think, I live on the sixth floor. He want to tell me, go find apartment space and carry those stuff and bring it to your apartment. He going to tell me that. Now, this time, I have the park on Atlantic. This time, I have the park on, I don't want to name that street by the dealerships. I carry my packages in my car. They, some folks don't have any respect for us. And I think we need a sensitivity, you have to do a sensitivity training in courts. Because if one more officer disrespects me, he going to have hell to pay. Because I'm a woman that died first. I might be, I might say it with some base in my voice, but when I pray for you, you got a problem. You got a God to answer to first. No more disrespect. I'm respecting you as the chief of police. It comes from you and you got to give an order to them. You can't disrespect us. I had a, what do you call that? What do you call the guy that died around? The court enforcement. I guess he thought, I was coming out of 100 Church. I guess he thought I was a prostitute or something, flagging him down. If y'all were going to come to this meeting, I was going to get it to him. He was smart at the village. You know what? Nah, I better go back around and see what she wants. And came back around. We got to hold these dealerships accountable. On Mar, on Market Court, there's so much debris and garbage on that street. He told me, he said, they're fineing them. After the third fine or the second fine, we have to figure out how we hold them accountable. We giving the pilots? You want to do business in our town and you disrespecting us? Not feeling like you have obligations to clear up the sidewalk? Now, I brought this up months ago. Bring the small businesses to the village. Sit them down here like you do the people who get tickets, right? Now, we don't have to chastise them. Let's say, listen, give them a cup of coffee. Give them a bagel and say, okay, this is your responsibility. Make them accountable. You have to see the sidewalk. They can't say it wasn't told. Because when you give them the fine, then after the first fine, okay. Second fine, third fine, drop the hammer. They doing business in our town. I'm tired of walking over stuff. Ms. Brazey brought it up. She walked the foot to her home. We stepping on hyperdural needles. Why? We got programs here, community service. Make them clean it up. If they not, make the business. That bitch is right behind Market Court. They own the whole block. They out there laughing and giggling about how they got brand new cars. Let them come out there cleaning up all that trash. If people throwing the trash down still, you own a business here, clean it up.
That's right.
Academy. How long do they have? How do they, every day I brought this issue up? Monday through Sunday, they doing construction work all day, all night. What, what do they have to stop? Can they go 24 hours? I told you, going at 5:00, 6:00 in the morning. Do they, how long can they do construction? And the fire marshals, we know, they don't even warn. She said, we don't have a little park in on Terrace. But now, most believe that our neighbors have own homes. They can't park. But I don't think all the signs don't matter. We need, listen, policemen giving, Market Court, they don't make tickets on Market Court. I know that. Cars don't move when they want to. Now, I think that's always the answer. Give a warning first. Have a little warning sticker because we can't afford the tickets. We already paying high taxes. Give a warning first. Don't give a ticket first. Give a warning. Have a little warning because I don't need any more tickets. I paid up all my, thank you, Jesus, I paid all my tickets in Hempstead. But give a warning first and then give a ticket. But we paid all these high taxes in Hempstead and we not getting the bank for our buck. Mister Ma'am, please, we need some kind of relief here. The fire, he not even here. Well, get the fire marshal to go into some of these apartments, some of these houses that we know that got eight, 10, 15 families living in it. The woman with the air conditioner window, you see three or four dishes hanging from the houses. Mister Ma'am, answer my question. I need you to answer to my question.
Okay, the Market Court situation is not acceptable. I did get a message. They guarded the hyperdural needles on that street and did call D B D B. They did go down with the test report consistently. Now, fire department, it's not expected till Monday and Tuesday. The 10th department is visiting by the chiefs every Monday and Tuesday. I will talk to the chiefs, work out a plan. I know we want them here.
Yes.
And that will be fine. Please keep in mind that they are volunteers and that they do a great job and deserve more applause than they get from this audience.
I'm not saying that. I love our fire department, but they come to the terrace all the time. I love our fire department. They come to the terrace all the time. They bring up something terrace all the time.
Thank you. And the men and women of the fire department that earn that praise.
I agree.
Thank you. But I will talk and see what you can work out. I understand you'd like their report and questions to be asked.
Yes. Show up to the meetings.
That's it.
Thank you.
And regards, in regards to CBA, some people who have some intelligent, I'm not saying, no, people not intelligent, but who could be in the access.
Let me make this announcement. The trustees, please say if they echo this. I fear that we need two new members who will entertain resumes, let's say until a week from Friday.
Okay.
And then we can gather and come up with the names if we feel best suited. Make sure your resume reflects what makes you the appropriate choice.
And what about the loading zone at 100 Terrace? Some cops, some police officers, I'm not going to call cop. Some police officers are, are tall. They are very nice to the residents.
There is no parking as you know, what I'm talking about.
I didn't say parking. I said loading.
Yeah, but I'm not sure if we're referring.
How can we get our packages to our partners? And you can't, if I can't, if I'm parking on Atlantic or down by the dealership, I can't carry all my bags to my, my parking. Is it possible?
The main purposes of the parking areas that we don't commit is so that indeed, if there were a fire, they can get close enough so that they can get the ladder trucks to the top and save.
I said loading. I just said parking, loading and unloading.
Explain why there's limitations and we rely on parking. And there's a safety feature for all of the people. Your situation, isn't there parking in the basement with handicap? So there's.
It's based on.
It's flooded and it's only for the employees. I work there. I live there.
Okay, it's, it's, it's based on as the position. You don't have enough parking. I'm, I'm handicapped, so I put my sticker in the window when I'm going to take my things out.
Is there room in the basement?
No.
No.
No. Well, I'm told, no. It's who you know and who you, and I'm not going to say that. I'll be nice. I'm told, I'm told that there's no parking available for me.
Okay, thank you.
So, but I need to get my packages fixed. I can't walk from like five, six blocks. I literally have to walk three, four blocks of time and it's impossible.
I'm not, I'm not sure I've got an answer.
But there was a sign there. The sign is being removed. That it been broken. You could see it was broken.
All right, Mr. I said note that your time limit is long since passed.
Well, listen, I don't want no more tickets. I'm telling you right now, I'm going to bring it to y'all and I'm going to help you pay it.
Park legally. Terry Winston?
At the last meeting, I had expressed my concern about this administration's repeated disregard for this community's fundamental right to be informed. You weren't elected to be empty suits that merely sit on the fence and wonder what happens. And neither were you elected to put your own personal agendas before the needs of this community. That's it.
Thank you. George Ross?
Good evening, Antrustees.
Good evening.
What I added to you about the trees I have stepped connected to, used to supervise them.
Thank you.
So, again, but I did want to, I have a question about how many code enforcement do you have?
Yeah, yeah.
How many code enforcement do you have?
Three. Three. Three code enforcement? That doesn't sound correct.
Yes, it does, it does, it's been three for over five years, that's why I was wondering if you had.
The community divided up, and it was code enforcement each area. I'm sorry that people left early because he's, he would have the exact answer.
But that's the point, if there's always been three, your choir, you had ten, you recollect?
No, I, I don't remember ten, but I don't remember three either.
You remember?
Uh, there was, uh, at one time, we had the title of code enforcement, and they went to court and said that, you know, we didn't take the test.
They were uncertain about it.
Right, but you took the enforcement, how many were?
So you only have three? You have four.
The point being that, um, when you talk about code enforcement, you really need to consider, first of all, I had suggested choir moving them around. You know, people need to do their job, they need to be moved around a lot, so they don't be on the tape in one's. I'm just saying, it's not an accusation, it's, it's, it's a caveat, because so many things is going on and being ignored. And if you restrict it to a person or any individual, you allow not to be aware of what's going on. Um, and the issue with the police officers, you know, accountability is something that, um, you know, they have to divorce.
Excuse me, can I ask for a second? Pete, how many code enforcement do we have presently?
Five.
Thank you. Here's the answer. And the idea of rotating code enforcement is what you're arguing. This is a two pound side. Right now, they have an area, they stay with that.
Right, have there increased revenue with them?
I'd have to look and hope to see, one would assume a good code enforcement, they have their own salary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Reggie Lucas?
Good evening, everyone. Um, I don't know how to make you, uh, they said they'd laugh, but I don't know about three. But anyhow, um. I, I actually asked, uh, I was here the last time, about the, uh, the drugs and prostitution that came from the Bronx down to Hempstead. And you said we're gonna look into it, did you ever look into that?
Yes, we, we talked eleven times yesterday regarding it, among other things. And I haven't found no trail from the Bronx to Hempstead regarding that issue. Chief, can you elaborate?
Well, that was, that was an investigation that was started by the New York City Police.
I, I saw that.
For ten years, sir.
You said for what?
For ten years, they investigated, what?
I don't know about ten years, you talking about on Front Street over here?
They said it was a ten year investigation. I mean, you can't do news, you.
So, what investigation?
Ten months.
Ten months?
Ten months, it was not ten years.
Alright, ten months. You know anything about it?
Yeah, just what I read in the paper, the NYPD started investigations, and some of their own, they were, there was a former, I think sergeant, a detective who was arrested, and, uh, they were running a prostitution ring, and I think one of the areas that were involved in it was on Front Street. That was one of the areas.
Alright, I just wanted to make sure that we do something about it, that it wasn't a fable story. Um, shot spot. For the month of, uh, September, how many times did shot spot get on these?
Every time we come here, we usually gave a year to two week period for the last board meeting. And last board meeting, I believe, I knew seventeen, uh, shot spot alerts. Uh, for this two week period, there were nineteen shot spot alerts, and it was, um, five confirmed shootings out.
Five confirmed shootings?
There were five confirmed shootings.
It was four one day, and then, that was one day this weekend, there was one of them, two?
But it was a guy who was shot in the thigh. That's one on Tuesday, on Saturday.
Right.
Right.
No, the reason why I'm asking all this is because, you know, whenever we ask the police department about crime, they say crime is going down. So, it must have been very terrible, prior to this, they had, in two weeks' time, there's six people shot, and crime is going down.
Well, if you want the crime numbers, I can give you the crime numbers. If, if you want statistics, I have the statistics. But I can, I, I can give you a point of reference here. Alright, from year to date, we've had seventeen people shot in Hempstead. That's from January to September. Uh, you compare that to 2010, it was twenty-nine. You compare that to 2012, it was twenty-five. In 2013, it was twenty-six. In 2016, it was twenty-five. So, look, the, the numbers are down, even though there was a number of shootings this week. But overall, the numbers are down.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, uh, are we the brothers and gang type of, uh, things to deal with this, or we can't deal with it, or what? What are we, what are we gonna deal, how we gonna deal with this?
Are we dealing with the shootings? Uh, we're dealing with it in a number of ways, we put out extra patrol cars. Uh, we have a car specifically designed to Terrace Avenue. We have another car specifically assigned to MLK over in the Hill area, that area. In addition, we've changed the hours of, um, the investigations gang unit. Now, we have to have a supervisor and two officers working from 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM. The community policing unit, the sergeant, and two officers also have to work from 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Uh, we have state grant money, which we're putting out a supervisor along with two guys in an armored car. So that's three supervisors in addition to the patrol supervisor that's on the road. Um, we've spoken to a shot spotter. We're trying to get the cameras connected to the, to the shot spotter, so the cameras turn, we just spoke to them about that today. We spoke to the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, we met with three special agents about getting involved in Hempstead. We're now, have a Hempstead detective assigned to the ETF Task Force, they're gonna be doing gun investigations. They're also gonna have undercovers who will come in here and look to buy guns. Today, we had officers go out with probation. We had, we developed twenty-one probation warrants. They went out at four o'clock, by six o'clock, and we was here, they had at least two people under arrest.
Very good. Okay, uh, my next question is for you guys up there. Last week, or either week before last, at Ostra, they had something on legalizing marijuana. Did anyone go a ten, or you sending anybody to a ten?
At Ostra?
Yes, they, they had a, 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 a.
They had a.
A conference or whatever.
There, there was two events that evening.
Yeah, I was there.
Good.
Okay, did you give us an update of, of, my mistake, oh, you fought marijuana?
And it wasn't so much about marijuana, it was more about opioids, heroin, Oxycontin, Percocet, things of that nature. Marijuana wasn't really one of the big issues.
And there was a second event that evening that I attended, and it had to do with actually getting together with the families of victims who were killed by violence. And it was, it was a touching evening, but it was also a very important evening that we could be representing.
So, are we leaning towards legalizing marijuana in Hempstead, or are we not?
In Hempstead.
No, but we didn't ask that, is that, uh, at one time, the old dent, and they had over there by Popeyes? The person was about to buy it to sell, uh, to be this, this, uh, cocaine marijuana. That's why I asked you that.
Alicia Martin?
Okay.
Uh-oh.
I don't need the mic, but, um, I would like to ask you a question, um, all due to the panel and to Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
We swore you in two years ago. I know you came into a mess, um, with the village, and we're the only town, if you go into Rockville Center, you look in, there flower beds, everything. We have, we are the town and the village of Hempstead, and we look like a cesspool. And, it's got to do something. We have overcrowded, um, uh. Not that, sweetie, that's, that's not even on the, that's not even important right now. We have, um, uh, these, you know, homeless people. They're sleeping at the bus stops, Mayor, at, at, up there at, um, at, um, wait a minute. Up here, liquidators. They're coming up with three carts, and you can't sit down. Let's say a friend dropped you off, and, and you wanna take the N6, because the N6 and N4 runs all night. That's the only two Nassau County buses. One go down Merrick Road to, um, the, um, to Jamaica, and the other ones go to Jamaica Island Bus Terminal. I've been riding them buses for thirty years, I know how those buses run, okay? The Hempstead Bus Terminal is filthy. You have the people loitering, they have to be out eight, nine o'clock in the morning, and then, they're in the bus terminal, a lot of them are men. And they, they have issues and problems and stuff. You cannot transfer from one bus to the other, they, there's signs everywhere, "Do not smoke," and they smoking, and it ain't just cigarettes. Okay? So, you know, in between the lines. Then we have people that's coming from MTA, nobody wants to come and use Hempstead Train Station. All our train stations in Nassau County. The train station Hempstead was fixed, the one in Freeport, all of them. And the people come home, they get up three, four o'clock in the morning, they work out, out in the city, as far as Jersey. Hempstead, they, they work all, the Bronx, Queens, Brooklyn, Manhattan, and Harlem. They come off the train, and you got people begging, because they homeless. And it needs to be addressed, because they live, some of them live out east, they don't have cab drivers saying, "Peep, peep, come on, you wanna take the, take the cab tonight." They take the buses. And the Hempstead Bus Terminal is closed at a certain hour, it's filthy. And we're taxpayers. And our town looks like a cesspool. I am ashamed of the way Hempstead. You need to hire some more people. I used to see them on Main Street, they used to clean up, they used to come around. I live in 100 Terrace Avenue, and I like to tell you, there's a lot of educated, good people on Terrace Avenue. I've been there for thirty years. I moved in nineteen eighty-eight. October twenty-eighth, two days before Halloween, it'll be thirty years. And I'm telling you, I'm giving you until April thirtieth. And if you don't clean up this town and do something with it, we gonna peach you out, just like Trump, we gonna get rid of him before January. We gonna peach you out and put Mr. Daniels in, we want something, y'all, you a fresh man, and we want somebody that can handle. When was the last time you parked your car, Mr. Ryan, and, and walked the neighborhood? Do you do that? Because I know you live in Hempstead. When was the last time you parked your car in a certain area and just looked at the neighborhood?
Alicia Martin?
Yes, sir.
I have been on Terrace Avenue every day of my life. I was born there, and I lived there as long as you are now living there. I love that block.
But you don't live in the building, because you know what I mean, about five, ten years, they gonna sell it. It's a recent market. Listen, listen, this may, uh, we used to have a, we used to have a lady there, she passed away. I know you know about it, what was her name? Uh, Ms. uh.
Ms. Dingel.
Ms. Dingel. She used to tell us, "What you gonna do when they sell Terrace Avenue?" I raised one child there. We know that you good, you been on the trustee, you been, you known at Hempstead High School, you helped out children for twenty-five, thirty years.
Fifty-seven.
And, and then, okay, fifty-seven. But as a mayor, as we swore you in, at least Mayor, and I'm not trying to be funny, you came into a mess, and I understand that, and I'm taking that in consideration. But, Mayor Gardner did two, two or three things, and then Mayor Hall, whatever he did. Okay, so now, as the mayor, after two years, what are you gonna do with the village and the town of Hempstead? And I mean, you better clean it up.
Let me, let me.
You better clean it up, it's time, because it looks filthy.
Thank you.
Main Street is disgusting.
Let me be specific with the thing you go here and what you'll say. Beautification, we do have a new person to our beautification. The former one had moved out of town, she's living with a, a brother in Atlanta, I believe. And we do have a need for the beautification, and we'll push in that.
A lot of stuff was scheduled down on the.
Bus terminal and Long Island Railroad that's put down, we concur. There are two people at the bus terminal paid by that.
We supposed to have MTA police officers in this?
That's what I'm just saying to you right now. There are two at the bus terminal paid by that.
We don't, we don't say.
Long Island Railroad doesn't even have a person. They have a rotating individual who comes by once in a while. We have met with both individuals in leadership, it is definitely a problem. The two people at the bus terminal are non-threatening, and they have difficulty getting people to move, because no matter what they say to them, the people say, "I'm waiting for the next bus."
And they have to reinforce, they know, and let me tell you, the security there, no suits really taking buses.
And when it was an incident, they call our village police. The Long Island Railroad is similar. One person who rotates many areas and comes to the village selling.
Can you.
It is a concern, there's no question.
But can you imagine, you're buying a monthly ticket, and you're coming home at five o'clock off a five o'clock train, or six o'clock train, and you're being bull guarded by people that should have conducted their lives and made better choices years ago, because life happens, things happen, people get put out. And you're coming home from a hard day's work, as low as Harlem, and you gotta be, "I need some money, yeah, you got this." And then you know we're being harassed, they spit and piss everywhere. Our village, they, oh, men will just pull out there, whatever, and be all over, all over. All over Hempstead. And I'm asking you as a mayor, when was the last time you parked your car in different zones and just looked? They, they fought to keep West Hempstead Train Station open, so they put that so-called affordable housing over there. Then they closed our food store over there. And then stopped and shopping Hempstead, was saying they don't make enough money. They, it, it's, it's hot. Their food, they, you go to West Hempstead, it's a big difference. It's, and the meats and stuff, and the fruit is horrible. When are we gonna take our town back? We gotta take it back, and charge these people that have businesses, make them pay taxes.
I have, uh, a need that holds down a challenge, not a way to do prices, so out of line. But the two areas that you mentioned, that needs emphasis, all the bus terminal and the Long Island Railroad station.
I take the buses in, and I, and I'm being harassed about a guy in a wheelchair, and he get money every month, the government take him because he's disabled. Then he wanna curse you out, because you ain't giving him no money.
I understand.
And it's disgusting.
I agree with you.
Mayor, you, you, let me say this, because if they move that bus terminal somewhere else, it's not gonna be fair. It's been here since the sixties. That old piece was over there, we had a hard time with it over there. They went through and we fought for that. And you can't determine there's no money in the budget for them to clean it? They used to clean it. Now it's not being cleaned at all, it's filthy. They took up some seats. And us that have the two hours on the transfer, we wanna sit down and not be harassed, not smell cigarettes, or reefer in two or three o'clock in the middle of the day while I'm waiting for another bus. I am a taxpayer, and I am a business owner. I have my own small business, and I live in the building, which about five years from now, they gonna put, where they gonna put us? Because we don't have Section Eight, they not gonna give us, where's all them people in that unit on 100 Terrace Avenue gonna move? Trust me, it's a piece of property, it's been for years, in the next five years, we not gonna be able to live on Terrace. And all them people that are there are gonna be out. With fire prompt, every couple of years, there's a fire, and the last fire was 2014, on the Fidel side, because I've been in the middle section for thirty years. For thirty years, Mayor Ryan, thirty years, I done seen people get shot in front of me. I open my door, and bombs are sitting, are sleeping on my apartment door. Now, and let me tell you something, you live in a house, and it's a big difference. Your concerns and things are different from mine's. A lot of us get, the parking is only the first level, the basement is for employees and it's flooded, the building is old. The build, they won't even fix the air conditioner in the building. You know it, you've been in that building, it's old. We have to call the building department to get people, the management and stuff, to do their job, because they don't wanna fix nothing. And then they building up everything all over, every piece of sticker property in Nassau County, they throwing up stuff in Hempstead, throwing up, looking, look how congested 100 Terrace Avenue is. You got three schools on one block. What was that pastor thinking? He gonna build a middle school? Not even thinking about the residents. I don't wanna look out the back of my window that faces Jackson, the Jackson side, and look into the school and see students sitting in their classroom. Builder gotta come down, because it ain't up to code going.
Former Mayor Don Don, once he changed his words.
It's coming down.
Yes, Mayor Don, my honor.
But maybe they gonna fight, it's gonna come down.
Mayor Don, just one comment. I, I know, I appreciate your concern, and obviously, you were speaking heartfelt. I was there at that last fire, though. And I stayed, and at the end, when the red cross is taking care of the people, the legal residents of the community in that carpet building, they had logic. So, we can't.
When we had diff, not to disrespect you, when we had different management, when we had a fire in 1991, the, all the people that was on the Jackson side, they got $5,000. Since the management, um, have, have, um, changed over the years, and it used to be Katrina Weaver, and now Stephanie, whatever. These people that, okay, yes, she was higher up, but she's still over the building. Those people that lost everything, that did not have fire and flood insurance, didn't get a dime. Those young people had to start all over.
No, I, I don't appreciate.
You understand what I mean?
Yes.
And we don't know when it's gonna happen, Mayor Ryan. You may, you, you may say, "Oh, my God." You may, you, you may say, "Oh, my God, Lisa Mark was in the meeting October second at her apartment." Look at, and you might have to read about me. And I'm saying to you, as a taxpayer and as a parent, I raised one daughter in that area. It is a tough area. We have women that's all over the place, and, um, you can't even park their car. You, you got needles all over the place. And, and when we go in the garage, they using, the crap makes the women use the bathroom. And they use, they, instead of they putting their behinds on a public toilet, like Burger King or McDonald's, they're using it in our, in our garage. And we got cameras all over that building and all over the block. From, from down by the telephone company, all the way down to Atlantic Avenue. And it don't, those, those police officers don't wanna come around there unless it's a big bus. Because I see them coming into our, our, um, security office from time to time, when they looking for a guy, and it's all over Channel Seven, Channel Twelve News. I want change in the village. I want change in the village and the town of Hempstead. We have to make this. I know it's not your fault. And like I said, we, I, we don't have no flowers, our streets are dirty. Main Street is the main street you come down. They, even right here on Nichols, your, the roads are terrible.
I just wanted to.
You gotta do something, you gotta do better, Mayor, you gotta do better.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanna let you know that there is an element of love on the part of this board. The night of that particular fire, and the Red Cross did a nice job in here, a place for all people who were legally designed there. There were many of them who were there, and they were not on the list, they were not legally designed there. And they had come to me, and they said, "Tom, we have nowhere to go." I said, "We know where I live. Door's open, light'll be on, food's there, come to the house." And I don't, I don't, with those people.
We got, we got apartment building, um, Jason, 200 Terrace Avenue, all the Spanish people in there, and they illegal.
But I'm, I'm just saying to you that there is a love and an effort. We have to come and do a better job. Main Street's gonna be beautified a bit. We certainly can't do all of it.
We used to have the Black Lanterns that go over like this. We ain't got nothing now. I mean, look at Rock, go into Rockville Center. They look good, they got hanging baskets with the flowers in it. Roosevelt on Nassau Road looks better than Hempstead.
Okay, alright, I'm on you.
Okay, I know, I'm sorry. But that's how I feel about it.
There's gonna be some beautification down on Main Street. Obviously, we're not gonna manage to the street, we have sewer problems. Otherwise, we're gonna do the street, rip it up, do the sewers, do the street again. So we, we do have some major concerns, there's no question. But there is an effort, as part of the report that was given tonight regarding sewer ban on Main Street. The Bus Terminal, Long Island Railroad Chief, I'd challenge you to see if you can help in that regard, I'll make two phone calls. Tomorrow, I have met with both leaders more than once. We get promises, but obviously, the delivery is not there. Place is still, it's loud and clear. But I do know that the bus terminal, there are two people. They walk around and they are not enough. And they can't get people to leave because they're always waiting for the next bus. The Long Island Railroad, we do have panhandlers. It's unacceptable. We need to be able to put that in. And we need to also address the problem with the panhandling, no question about it. Beautification will pick up now that we've appointed a new person in charge. So I hear your problems and your complaints. And next time on on Terrace, please stop this talking, we'll walk through.
Well, love is, well, love for you.
You'll see me every day.
I'll walk you from the, from the beginning.
And I, I tell you what, maybe the only person who's there as, as much as me is Trustee Johnson. And we both are there for many of the programs and activities, and just there.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, sir.
Okay, Shelley Braisley?
Yeah.
Oh, Mayor Gordon, excuse me. I remember you now.
Yeah. Thank you. Ma'am, I could understand your frustration. Um, and I know that the board is mad at you and all they can do. But one thing I would offer, uh, at that Long Island Railroad. They were specifically told, when I left, when I left, that I was not gonna put those suitcases there. They don't belong there. That the minute I left office, Wayne Hall allowed them to put there. Now, those suitcase belong at Amtrak in Manhattan. The reason those suitcase don't belong there, because they use the sleeping benches. That's exactly what's going on.
That's right.
Okay? The next thing, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I would allow you, uh, with along with the chief of police. The MTA headquarters is located here, right down on that street in Mercer's.
Mercer's.
Mercer's, that's where they're located. And they are, huh?
They, they want to be in Bedpage.
Okay. But it's for you, Mayor, uh, I would, you and, and the chief are certain to meet with the MTA, uh, police.
Boy, sounds good, but clearly, we need to do it.
Um, and then if we, if they don't give you some satisfaction, uh, I know, but we can get some satisfaction. And that is downtown MTA headquarters, which I have some good contacts in there.
Appreciate that.
Okay? We, we can work in there. The next thing is, uh, I would implore you to maybe pass up a law in this village on panhandling.
Yes.
If you, if you're a public, on the panhandling, especially people standing around, uh, 711 store, just standing just outside the door. They beg every time I go there. They beg, they beg, they beg, they're trying to shake me down. They want to go over there.
It's uncomfortable.
It's very uncomfortable. It's uncomfortable for me, I know it's uncomfortable for the females in this village. I would, I would certainly do that. And then, of course, the bus terminal. I would call Laura Carr, because a nice bus belongs to Nassau County. Unless if that do, long, call, call Laura, Laura Carr. And then of course DPW, if that's who's responsible for it. But I would you, I would call Laura Carr tomorrow morning. And that's five seven one three one.
Alright.
Right.
Okay. Let's go there, five me again?
Five three one.
Oh, wow.
No, five seven one.
Five seven one.
Three one, three one. To speak to Laura Carr.
Okay.
But that's, that's a very responsible, that, that, the bus terminal.
Because they wanna move it to Uniondale. What you gonna do about that? It's been in here since nineteen sixty here. And if they move that bus terminal to Uniondale, and that's a piece of property they wanna buy. That's gonna be a problem. It's a rumor since two thousand and fifteen.
It's a rumor, and that's a real statement, it's a rumor.
Yeah, but, you know, I'm just letting you know. If you hear about it, and if it happens, you can't say we wasn't talking.
I hear that.
But, uh, Mr. Mayor, I would implore you to deal with that, that panhandling situation, that one, that's really, it's really.
What are the options that panhandlers can do?
It's probably a misdemeanor. Because they're allowed to do certain things.
I know the loitering laws have changed, so there's, there's some confusion I regard. I think we can't come up with a, a better plan than now. I, I do know I had a, a minister from St. George's Church complaining about the loitering in his cemetery. And then all of a sudden, in the middle of the conversation, he said, "Wait, I'm getting up on the, I'm a minister. I'm asking you what to do with people who are needs, that's on me." And he left and tried to address those needs. I know the right thing by these individuals, so obviously, that's all my heart counts. Okay, uh, Shelley Braisley?
Homeowners, both homeowners. Evening, Mayor, trustees, residents of Hempstead. Hi, tonight, um, someone sent me a lease renewal, a twenty, uh, villa court. And I'm, I'm a little confused. Because if this young lady signs her lease for a year, it's sixteen hundred dollars a month, is her rent. If she signs a lease for two years, her rent is nineteen hundred dollars a month. So typically, you sign a two-year lease, or three-year lease, or four-year lease to lock in a low price. So what's going, going on at Twenty Villa Court? If they're policing these people, have this, this lease period? What is the plan? Why do, why are they discouraging their tenants from signing a lease longer than a year? What's the plan for Twenty Villa Court? Who, I believe, is on that pilot list. I drove by there today. It's the garden department across from Jackson Annex School. They were beautiful when I was a child. Right? But now, they look like a war zone.
Look, it's actually, are you talking about St. Lanisburg or the?
Front Street School. Front Street School, yeah. Real Toys.
Rockville Center.
And, and let me ask you, Mr. Braisley, was that sixteen hundred for one year, nineteen?
Sixteen hundred dollars a month for one-year lease. Nineteen hundred dollars a month for a two-year lease. So who's gonna sign a two-year lease, when you living from paycheck to paycheck as it is? So, so what is going on? What is the plan for that property? What's the plan for that property? What's going on with those children? Uh, with, 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 with that lease? And, and is this happening any, anywhere else? What, what is going on in Hempstead? We're subsidizing these landlords. I'm talking about the homeowners with, with these pilots. They don't have any upkeep, not really. They're not responsible for anything. You, you know, they're not taking care of their properties. They're taking advantage of people. And now, you're putting out leases, and, and you're discouraging people from renewing the lease more than they do. So what's the real plan in Hempstead? What's going on in this community?
Well, the question is, what's going on in Twenty Villa Court? And let me ask you this, that the, you're referencing a lease that you've seen, something gave it to you?
It happened in my phone. She, she sent a copy of it.
You know something, I, I believe you put that on your sheet last week, but didn't ask the person.
Uh, yeah, I got it signed.
Pardon? Because, and, and.
It's gonna be easy to say this, like, tonight.
I'll, I'll, we'll have to call and find out, because it is, it's a generous. I mean, obviously, we think a two-year lease would be favorable, and the price would be lower if you agreed to say that. I don't have an answer.
No. May I?
Yes.
And, may I?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, Twenty Villa Court, that is one of our rent stabilized buildings. And what, uh, the law was enacted here in nineteen, um, what was it, nineteen, Mayor Gordon, seventy-eight. Um, we had that law implemented here for rent stabilized units. That is a stabilized unit there. And they do have one or two-year leases for the tenants. That tenant possibly have what is called a preferential rent, that they have to sign. So if the tenant outside and they choose not to sign that one, or annual, or two-year lease. Um, well, they sign one or the other. Um, if we have the Nassau County rent guidelines, one meeting that they need on an annual basis. The leases commence on October first to September thirtieth, on an annual basis. That tenant needs to come in to see me, because if they are being overcharged, I would refer the tenant over to, um, Gertz Plaza, which is the, um, Union Hall and, um, Plains. If there's an overcharge, and they can fill out a building-wide complaint, if it's other tenants, or an individual complaint form. So you need to send the tenant to my office so I can see the lease. Thank you. I certainly want that. And these are young people trying to stay here in Hempstead, and it's, it's just not right. Now, but let me just share this with you. If it is a, a, a building, and where an actual unit, which has been stabilized, and once they reach that mark over two thousand dollars, if the landlord chooses to charge, with the law that being, from, from the state, they can charge that, that, um, actual rent that they choose, that they wanna give the tenant. If they wanna go five, six hundred dollars more, once that building exceeds that two thousand dollars, that is their choice. And there's nothing that the Nassau County rent stabilized, um, Division of Housing and Renewal can do anything about. So I would have to see the rent roll and speak to, um, Mr. Ducey, who's over at, um, Gertz Plaza.
Mrs. Samantha Mountens, not only the deputy village clerk, she controls the landlord tenant relationships. I should have run this immediately, but I'm glad that you had the style of it.
Okay, I, I'll definitely send it to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Kathy Gary?
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
At the last meeting, uh, last Monday, uh, there was certain information that came out quite suddenly, uh, having to do with the DMS and the development plan, and the election of, uh, uh, Trustee Daniels. And that was that there was an admission that there was some type of consulting firm that the board hired, or the, the village board apparently hired. I get involved in meetings, and I don't know if that's such a resolution, but, uh, I wanted clarification on that. Uh, and that, uh, Jeffrey Daniels was part of the consulting team that was hired, um, to work with the developer, uh, to give consultation to the village board. And I was wondering what consulting firm it was, um, and what type of, uh, consulting was being done.
I, I think, uh, the question you were referring to was when Mayor Hall was dealing with the downtown revitalization plan. He needed some help with the trustees navigating through the pilots and other questions. Don Monti didn't pay the salary of Jeff Daniels to assist us in that congregation. I don't know if he was part of a firm, I thought it was an individual assignment, but he can defer that better than I could.
And that's actually, I was acting in my own capacity. And they approached me to help the village.
Who's they?
Originally, Mayor Hall and, uh, I guess RDUA to bridge.
Renaissance.
Yeah. Renaissance Downtown, whatever it's called, RDUA, to bridge the gap of understanding between what needed to occur to execute the plan and the abilities within the village to execute said plan. My ultimate guide was to protect the village, not to guide RDUA. And those that were available and knowledgeable of what happened, I actually did exactly what I was supposed to do, which was protect the village. So to, to say that I was there to act on behalf of developer is incorrect.
Well, um, your idea of protecting the village might be to confirm the opinion of the people in the village as to what, what's needed to protect the village. Uh, but you were hired, excuse me.
If you can say that, if you don't know, if you weren't part of the conversation, how would you know what occurred?
I didn't know what occurred, but I know what has occurred since then. And.
No contest.
What, what happened was that you were hired to work with Renaissance to consult with the village for some, for something, which was never revealed before you were elected, and which, um, uh, I don't recall, uh, this, this, uh, resolution to hire such a consultant. Okay? But I just thought we needed a clarification of, of what actually happened there.
I can see the agreement with you too. No problem.
Thank you, I would appreciate that.
Um, excuse me, Mayor, I hate to interrupt. Isn't there a rule or regulation for the town of Hempstead? That if you don't live in Hempstead, why are you at our board meetings? If you live in another town?
No, actually, no.
I'm asking a question.
I know, I'll, I'll give you the answer. Uh, when I went to the, the New York State.
You don't live here, what is the concern for Hempstead? If you're not a Hempstead resident? If you're Rockville Center, stay in Rockville Center.
Uh, Ms. Moore, let me answer it. When I went to the, uh, New York State Congress, the Mayor's Congress, I raised that question, because it was dealt with during one of the presentations. And the answer was, if you allow one person to speak, everybody can speak. That the address is not important, it's the public meeting, the title, whatever it is.
I know, but I'm just, I'm, I know, you're right.
We all have that same.
But I couldn't go to, I couldn't go to Rockville Center as a Hempstead resident. And, and if they put her out of there, then she needs to be put out.
Well, Mrs. Gary was actually preventing her from speaking for quite a while. However, the New York State Congress.
They're trying to, I know they're trying to.
That if the wife is divorced.
Stop, Lisa.
It's open floor. Open floor, open floor.
And you hired her to speak in Hempstead.
Yeah, but why, why can't you? You know, you're not a lawyer.
Let's go.
The idea.
Thank you.
Um, what I, I wanted to actually respond to what you said before about the, all these problems in, uh, in Hempstead. about the, all these problems in, uh, in Hempstead. And I, I've been to these ones for twenty years. And I lived here for ten years. And, um, through all this, what has happened in my opinion is that keep the board, from Mayor Hall, right down to the present time, spends most of its time and energies trying to bring in luxury housing into this community. Uh, such to the point of thirty-four, uh, hundred units of luxury housing. And I have been at the forefront of exposing this, but that is the plan. It's in writing and, uh, uh, it's also will be, will, will involve twenty-year pilots for all these luxury apartment buildings. And the end result, in my opinion, is that people like yourself on Terrace Avenue are gonna be moved out.
I already know that.
And that is the reason that, that the other apartment buildings are not well taken care of by their owners because they're in the end group where they see, oh, Hempstead's gonna become a luxury village, so we're gonna let our buildings go down so that we can convert them to luxury buildings at a later date when this whole thing happens. We have been able to delay this for a good number of years. But I didn't really attempt to get into that, but since you have raised this, I'm very much in sympathy with what you stated. Um, I also, um, handed out this, and, uh, this is about, uh, Rockville Center newspaper issued this statement that the village of Freeport had filed an action with New York State, against New York State and Nassau County and, uh, the town Hempstead. Uh, because the town, the county and the town do not give, uh, a good proportion of the sales tax that's generated in these villages to the actual villages that are generating sales tax. And so when I read the article, I wanted to know if Hempstead had joined in that lawsuit to try to get more tax revenue from the county, uh, for the village of Hempstead. Are, are you part of that, is this village?
Early on, we joined that, and now I think sixty-two or sixty-four villages have joined as well.
Yes.
Robert Kennedy is the lead plaintiff, we're right there, right there.
Right. And I would add to that, that for a village of Hempstead that has served this county by housing so many of the low-income people of the whole county, that this is a disproportionate amount of low-income people in one community because that basically other white communities do not allow low-income housing in their communities. And so, most of the people are coming to Hempstead. And I believe that this village should fight the county and the town for stipends from those counties to, to, uh, fund or to pay compensation to this village because it has created a situation where things is more, it's cost more to educate the children because of this situation, it caused, it caused the problem, it's other problems. The time clock wasn't even on.
The clock, your clock is up, you know, please.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Alright, thank you, everybody, thank you.
Should we adjourn?
Trustee Johnson? Trustee Perez? Trustee Mike Pro? Trustee Daniels? Mayor Ryan?